Right down there, shoot the mice.
I'm good.
Okay. Open this meeting, call the order.
All in attendance, Mike?
Yes.
Sue is absent, Nick?
Yes.
We have a, we have a partial board. Okay to go with action.
Okay. Mike, we turn it over to you.
Thanks, this is gonna be, in the Park District, it's gonna be updated as only amendment, and it's one, section three, twelve point three scheduled. Permitted uses of Parkland Recreation District. It's eighteen. Temporary uses through trucks, including streets and vendor sales consistent with section five, for the addition of issues. So this was initiated by the trustees, who went to some permission, didn't cash out where the temporary vendor street may be located at the Park District. And regional, that's proved that it would have public hearings as a condition.
Okay. Well, nice, now's the time for public hearings. Public comments, big comments. Okay, well, we have public comments.
So that is the zoning permit.
We just closed the meeting.
Right.
And I'll make a motion that there are no public comments, so I'm gonna make a motion that we can close the meeting.
I will second that. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion pass, we're closed at seven thirty-one.
Okay. So, I mean, just real quick, where, where is the bulk of this here?
Integrated commercials, all of them, pretty much ninety percent of state route, forty-three, and then ninety percent of ZOCS cases. Maple, so all of it now, for it's a big desert.
So they reviewed it and?
They, they decided to put it the same, same place where alcohol stands or.
Okay. Nick, you got any questions?
Uh, not a design, here are public comments, so do you have any additional questions?
Okay, that's public comments.
We got two now.
Hey.
Hey.
So, I was a little bit surprised that we got very entertaining space for marijuana dispensaries. In the interest of full disclosure, I was opposed to issue two last year. For two reasons, one, it seemed to me to be a money grab. And, and secondly, it's just a slipper slope, of course, through there after that. So, we're a year into this now with issue two, and, and I wanna tell you some of my observations that I, in a short time, I've had. Last fall, I was out, it was a nice day, I was mowing my grass, cartwheel, but two cartwheels left, within forty-five minutes, windows down, scum were repotting. So they were driving down the road, and they were high. And, Lord knows what could happen after that. You go up, I went up to one of the big box stores here, there was SUV parked in the handicapped spot, it was empty, and the windows were out, it was just reek of pot. So, people are walking around, taking pot, and not paying attention to what's going on. There are those folks that have limited financial means, so in property, that also get hired today. And they have a decision to make as to whether they're gonna buy a pot, or they're gonna improve their property. And in most cases, those folks, they don't improve their property, they keep, keep smoking dope. Unfortunately, I, I've seen folks that smoke with their kids, or their grandkids. Those people, that, that smoke throughout the day, that don't have jobs, that are going to need somebody that everybody here's gonna have to support at some point in time, because they can't work in society. There was a study in Denver, I just saw this one, that said that crime increased around marijuana dispensaries from twenty-sixth, fourteen-hundred percent. Same thing went on in California, although they didn't give any statistics for it. I'm not foolish enough to think that not having a dispensary in, in Brookfield will stop all of this, I know it won't. But, what it does, not having a dispensary in Brookfield reduces the risk to me of not letting people, not having people drive into me, being in accidents, not having people ruin the value of my property, because they can't take care of theirs. And so, for all those kinds of reasons, and more that I probably don't know about, I'm opposed to putting dispensaries in Brookfield. One final note, it's interesting to me that there's two of us here today to come out and speak about this, but we can fill the room with folks supporting a barbecue, another barbecue restaurant in Brookfield, they just pack the room. There's only two of us here that have any concern about how this goes in Brookfield. But.
Thanks for your comments. Denver, thank you.
So, I, I did get to speak with Nick on a couple of my questions beforehand, he was very good at giving me answers. We talked about the fact of where the area was that we were looking to putting this. As somebody who is recovering from using cannabis regularly, having that in a place that is a normal drag, and seeing it, our kids are gonna see that. Our kids go up and down that street, it's gonna be near the school, or could be near the school, something that's a concern in mine. And Nick and I talked about putting it into a, I believe, heavy commercial area over a, the main drags, which, I'm not against it, but I feel that having it out in the open for the community is not the best way to proceed with it. So looking at more of a heavy commercial area or a, area that would keep them out of those two main areas.
Thank you for your comments. I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Can't we craft our own, why do we have to go through a legal planning?
You don't have to, you could, you could alter what district this goes in, you could alter the language at the trustee level. The only thing that you, if you're prohibited, sometimes, of course, kind of catch up, maybe it is, to use, in part, to explain that process, but if you're gonna prohibit the, the use, you would have to deny this request, turn it down. And then make another motion to send it back to the zoning commission.
We're gonna have to do that.
To initiate the prohibiting amendment.
The townships have the right of trial, so just put it in.
Yeah, so generally, everybody's talking about other topics, it'll apply, can't hear a whole lot, but here, the drafters of issue two built in a provision, so it got passed obviously in November twenty-twenty-three, including a provision that allows localities, which is that subsection thirty-seven eighty point two-five, it allows municipalities or townships to prohibit or restrict the number of adult-use cannabis operations, whether it's cultivators, processors, or dispensaries. So you could, for example, you could decide you want to allow the processor cultivator, prohibit dispensaries, or, you know, allow all free, or allow one of them free, so you can have some flexibility. One of the, just so the trustees are aware, there is a fund created that, high level thirty thousand foot view, if there's adult-use sales within the township, it goes into a fund, and a portion of that is ultimately kicked back to you guys. Just so you know, it's my understanding that revenue is only generated from dispensaries, not from cultivators and processors, just so you're aware of that.
And inaction by the board, essentially, what does that mean? We did nothing, they just go wherever they want at that point, so we haven't put it into the house?
So chapter thirty-seven eighty is already live, so right now, if somebody submitted, you know, got license from the state, came in and applied, you know, you guys can have to do your analysis, does this fit within the township zoning resolution, and if it does, then you don't have a prohibition, and you'll just default to state law, essentially, right now.
So we need to take action with what our provisions is.
I would recommend, yeah, yeah, because that would be, you crafted a little bit in these places, obviously, you aren't limited somewhat, you know, villages and cities, you have a little bit more control over it, but you do have some ability to control specifically zoning or limit issues.
I mean, if we crafted ourself, and we turned down this, I mean, there's still a window for them to get in?
I mean, the last, it's been technically effective since December of last year, so, you know, it's been, if you just, yeah, it's full, you don't pass it right now. But, yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna tweak it, you wanna enhance it a little bit, you wanna control where it's going, then yeah, you'll have to pass something.
I think, I was, that was more for you to see why we were bringing it up on the floor. There's no, if there's inaction, if you create a bigger issue for us, so that's why it's here on.
Appreciate you.
Interesting, because as you just, I, I was mentioning, the trustee quoted a little bit earlier, but I did have some comments on the language for regional land, and maybe some suggestions, which I could send out to you guys before the next meeting, and you can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay, well, I'd definitely like to see some, I'm not very thrilled with this, but.
We gotta go through the process. If we were to prohibit, just so for, for education community, we deny this, then we have to send it back to them?
There's a second, a secondary process for a trustee initiated zoning resolution amendment, proposing to prohibit adult-use cannabis.
Okay, what's the timeframe on that, do you think, if we were to take that route? Is there a number of meetings times?
You could initiate it on motion, you know, at, at your regular meeting, you have to load this down, if you wanted to do that right now.
Okay.
I see, you know, by people.
Okay.
Okay. Mike, you didn't really weigh in much on your opinion.
No, I said, I don't think, especially as only question, that's their decision.
Yeah.
And then your decision.
Okay. Any more questions? Don't we got any comments?
I don't have any comments, no.
Okay. Well, we're done here.
I could say this, I could say one comment, because we use a woman engineer, and Michael had contacted me, and said if this ever passes, but keep in mind that everywhere there's a dispensary, you should request, if you decide to do it, you know, put it in with them, and go have some kind of provision for traffic studies, because he said the traffic system just really increases wherever these sales are, it's just, you know.
Do you, I know it's a different question, but do you know if Ken or Chalmers, has anyone passed anything like this?
Ken hasn't.
Ken hasn't? Has or hasn't?
They hasn't, they, they haven't, sorry, yes, they have a dispensary.
Okay.
And the only revenue from this for the township would just be the jet, which is payroll, money, just maybe one employee or two.
Yeah, and that one, and that one.
Yeah.
Or give it to the dispensary.
Do we know what that fund's paying out at? Do you know? Because I think they have a really keen with sales tax yet, have they?
Yeah, it's a, it's a ten percent, almost like an excise tax, and then you'll get a portion of that, exactly what that breaks out to, you know, is hard to say, but it's not gonna make you, well.
I'm just curious as to what the dispersment rate is, if it's the same for the municipality, or they did it like the LGF, or there's different dispersments?
Yeah, it'll be a different dispersment, and based on your local sales, and basically what, what that looks like compared to what the other local subdivisions contribute to the fund, so it's linked to your actual sales in the township or on the jet.
I'm just curious. I'm good, Mike.
I'm good too, okay. Well, we had the public comments, and I'm gonna make a motion, man, leave.
A second. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion pass, we're closed at seven fifty-nine AM.